Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I think the only person who should be tired is to see the clerk and her staff. Yeah, good job on yesterday. Another milestone. Congratulations to all the candidates that have won and also the ones that did not win. It's a great day in Mobile, Alabama. Let's get started, Melon Clerk.
Yes. This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council Wednesday, October 6th. We have approval of minutes from September 28th.
No problem.
Great, great job.
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on October 23rd on Kingsway Drive from 8:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Oh, Mr. Day's not here. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Day, he should be joining us at 10:30.
Okay. October 16th on Pillin Street. And this is Pillin Street on October 16th from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM in Cooper Riverside Park on October 16th from 4:00 to 7:00. October 16th.
What's that again? Yeah, talking about the order of the cheese. Yeah, Ashley's in District 3 and it's by itself. It's isolated while the rest of the flow barns. So, there's no residents near it.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Corey Brown doing business as Let's Ride Taxi Service. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Sabrina Mass has canceled Reggie Hill regarding ARP funding, Alabama Code 11-44C-168, right to institute a recall of the election whilst the city proceeding with the runoff when there's pending litigation. Consent resolutions held over 37-807 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for Canary Bar on North Jackson Street.
Mr. Williams.
I'd like to, first of all, say that in my 15 years, I've had three locations in District 4 that is my only basis for evaluating. And generally speaking, as y'all know, we don't, you know, kind of yield to the representative of the district and that is currently unfielded or is vacant and won't be for another three weeks. But in this case, I have to apply what I believe to be, you know, the same standard I applied to three places. The Whiskey, Chief Batiste and Chief Barber are both going to remember that name. The second was a place called the High Chaparral. And anybody over the age of 35 in Mobile knows where that was. And then the last, and CJ will know this very well because Mr. Small and I both dealt with, the Shotgun Willys. No matter who ran them or who was going to run them, no matter what the restrictions that were volunteered, no matter what the genre, no matter the promise. You could change the name, you could change the people, the locations continue to cause issue in the community. It's simply because when they open again, nobody knows that there's a change. Nobody knows that there's supposed to be enforcement and it goes back to being the same thing. We tore down the High Chaparral. We put a, we put a police car out in front of it forever. It seemed like a year and a half before they decided that they were just going to tear the building down and sell the property, which they did. Shotgun Willys moved twice and they caused problems to the very, very end. It wasn't the owner's intent to be a nuisance. And so, I don't know how to say this anymore than, that's, that's the standard that I have. Now, the law. I know I'm going to be informed of the law. There's only, when Ben Brooks, my predecessor, went to the State Senate, he added several things. One is, was it going to be disruptive or a nuisance to the community? Number two or three, I don't know which order they were in, is the proximity of churches and schools. And gave the council and municipalities a grounds for denial. I don't think that there are grounds for denial. But there's certainly grounds for being concerned as a city with the millions of dollars of investment that have gone on in downtown. More than any economic development that we could have incentivized, there has been an absolute rejuvenation north of Dolphin. And I'm concerned that without a clear plan, and here comes my point, without a clear plan from the administration on how we're going to enforce our laws and the restrictions, self-imposed and otherwise, placed on this property. And not just this property, but other properties like it that maybe we don't even know about. Maybe the administration does. Maybe the community does. But how are we going to enforce it? How are we going to assure the people that have invested in their houses and their businesses to the tunes of millions and millions of dollars that they're going to be protected? That their peace is going to be protected? This has nothing to do with whoever, I don't know who owns the property. It has nothing to do with who might run the property. I don't know them either. It has everything to do with whether or not we're going to enforce something that we were unable to do the last time that this business was open at this location.
Ms. Rich.
I have the same sentiments due to example of a lounge club near residential property. And it's, it's, it's like oil and fire. It doesn't really go very well together. It's, the hours do not actually make it conducive for someone who usually is restful at the time when they're in their home as opposed to out and active. So, we have zoning codes for a purpose and when they bump in inappropriately, something suffers. And usually it's the neighborhood because the business, you know, is allowed by right, but the homeowner just leaves. The idea that the entertainment district has a limit on how many patrons can be in an operating facility was to make this blend work. And I think that's a maximum of 100, if I'm not mistaken. Correct? And so, this is going, exceeding. And I do agree that in a couple of weeks, there'll be a council person to speak for those residents and also listen to the business model and maybe come up with something that even expands a little bit because I understand the planning commission, I think, didn't give them the full breadth of what they had applied for as far as the number of patrons that could be there at any one time. They limited some hours of operation, but let's give the council person an opportunity. We've always been really good about that. So, I would say the same purpose to let it rest a little bit and give, give that individual an opportunity to, you know, meet and develop a rapport with residents in the area and along with the owners and operators of the new facility.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
My position is just the opposite. This is the new growing, growing entertainment area here, St. Louis Street. St. Louis Street was dead for years. So, finally, we got St. Louis Street up. The grill's just opened up. I believe you can buy liquor in there. So, Dolphin Street once was almost all liquor. It was almost dead except liquor. So, finally, we were able to get, so we, this is the entertainment district. And here is someone saying, "I want to, I want to open up in the entertainment district to be a part of this great run of zones downtown." And we start, we're holding up flags about the police. You've got 13 blocks of entertainment. If you leave Dolphin Street at Roya and you walk to St. Louis, you've got 13 blocks of bars and entertainment. You know how many folk came down here to tell us they were concerned? So, here we, here we got African-American female wanting to locate a business here. Flags going up. I should put the flags down. This is the entertainment district. You've got the, where, where is, you've got the director of public safety. Let me ask you this, Mr. Director. Do you believe you, you all have the capacity to predict, to protect the citizens who may frequent this particular business?
I think the question before the council is whether or not we should approve the, approve the changing of the zoning for that area to allow them to open up. But nonetheless, it is a matter that, from a public safety standpoint, we do have a precinct in the area and we will do what we've always done in relationship to holding businesses accountable for their behavior and their action.
Right. That's my, that's my whole, my whole point. Whether or not the police will be able to take care of this business, the issue was raised, I'm saying that should not be an issue. We have people downtown that can respond to any issue at any business downtown in a matter of moments.
Again, yes, sir. My, my position would be is that, you know, we can't predict what might happen. And so, as a result of that, we have placed the proper resources in that area to be able to respond. And until there's a violation of the law at that point, we will respond and take the appropriate action that needs to be taken.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you. So, there, to the query about us having a plan, there is a process. In fact, there are multiple processes. This particular business has followed that process of the planning commission and there were a number of challenges for them, unique challenges. And they have been limited to the number of people that they can bring in. Their hours have also been limited and that's been self, self-pleased. So, they won't be open past 10:00. They won't have amplified noise outside. Their number is not the 300 that people thought would happen. I think it's 178, 179, that particular number. But also, the process for when a place becomes a nuisance is clear. We've gone through it a number of times. We went through it on Broad Street. Mr. Arledge and I had to handle that matter. We put it before the council and revoked their business license and, and moved accordingly. There is a process for it. One of the problems here is we are prejudging this business based on the fact that there was another business location and that business didn't get shut down for a nuisance. That's the nuance here. So, we don't, we don't have a basis, and Mr. Arledge and I have had to deal with that. We don't have a basis for saying that other place was a nuisance when we didn't declare the nuisance. There might have been some calls, but they weren't always associated with the business. The secondary factor here is we're talking about a number of, of businesses that have developed. And we can understand wanting to put parameters on the time and not have noise at late at night, those are reasonable issues. But there's several emails and I think not everybody who is not on the planning commission that sits in this body is aware of the issues that came up during the planning commission. And we can talk about those more if you all want to and I'll be glad to brief you all on them.
If you could, I would like for you to do that because I was pretty much disturbed what I've heard and I believe that it should be public information.
I missed that meeting.
So, Mr. President, I'll give you one example and I'll read an email that we, as a staff, received in reference to 105 North Jackson Street opposed to this application for planning commission. And I'm reading verbatim, so the grammatical errors are not mine. It says, "My name is Jim Gilbert at 259 North Jackson Street, Mobile. I'd met with one of the owners and misled me to believe that this was going to be a high-end cocktail specialty mixer for afternoon crowd after work. 11 to 4:00 AM really doesn't, does not sound like that at all. I thought this was going to be called the Canary Club. It sounds like tag bar all over again. It's a complete mess. They blocked the street off, both walking and driving. They strewn trash everywhere. I talked to an old man on early morning and he was upset that his son's teeth were kicked out in front of the bar. I'm particularly concerned about the enforcement of existing laws, flaunted and ignored. We will not stand for this at the time. This is a slap in the face for all of us who've changed the neighborhood for the better. They are all standing around drinking out of their cars, having a great time. Why is there no entertainment zones on MLK Boulevard? Question. Only white areas. Question. Smacks of racism to me." Wrong. In addition to this email, there were other emails as well, but these business owners were asked if they used drugs and if, if they had criminal convictions. And this is when they met with, they met with some of the neighbors. And so, the question is, the agreements that they're being asked to enter into that are not part of our system, that are not part of our laws, there may be similar agreements, but no one is being asked to sign those agreements at this level when they're simply asking for a liquor license. And then you back that into the fact that it, of course, it's anybody's right to hold it up, but these discussions are all preliminary and there's no evidence that these ladies have caused any of these problems that are being talked about. And so, when being asked to go to MLK or being asked if they're from Pritchard or being asked if there are drugs involved, when none of the other entities that exist in this area in the entertainment district were asked that at the planning commission phase, nor were they asked those questions here when they were applying for their liquor license. So, that is the problem that we're dealing with. And I'm completely aware that the council was not aware that these issues were going on because it happened at the planning commission phase. But the staff is fully aware of it and I think it would be unfair for us not to tell you about it. There's some legitimate issues that got asked at the planning commission, planning commission level about occupancy. That's, that's a legitimate issue. About sound. Those are good issues to ask about. We ask those issues, ask those questions all the time. But the questions about drug use and, and the, and the background check, which is something we actually do for a liquor license. This is on your agenda because it has been cleared by the police department and by revenue. It is up to you whether you all want to hold it over. And that's completely up to you. But what I want you all to do is be able to operate with all of the information and understand that not all of the motivations, but some of these motivations just don't stand right.
Mr. President, while, while Mr. Ricardo's talking, he mentioned a police background check. There was not a recommendation in this application from the police department. Was there a reason why?
We typically don't make recommendations. What we typically put in our packages is whether or not the information that's requested is backgrounds and things of that nature there has been completed. This is completely a, it's approved by the police department to move forward for the council to consider it by the police department. So, if there's anything in the background.
We used to have three choices. Yes, no, and indiscretion. Am I right? Am I right? Anybody? Am I wrong?
Correct. But again.
Where is that? And I'm, look, I'm just looking forward to be complete. There's no representative for that district.
Yeah.
I don't know the ladies. I don't, I have listened here when, whatever the name of that club was. I couldn't walk you to it. I can bring you to North Jackson, but that's about as far as I can get you.
Well, I don't have the packet in here, but I can have it at 10:30. I can look, pull the packet.
Mr. President.
Ms. Richardson.
And I'll be through with this. The issue, I think Mr. Woods raised the issue. The issue is the "they." What they gonna do? They gonna be in the cars. They gonna be out there making noise and trashing the place. They. I lobbed it for a drug store to be located on the corner of Florida and Dolphin. We talked about 20 years ago. This entire arena was filled up from people, from other municipalities in opposition to the drug store regarding "they." That they gonna be out there waiting to rape us. They gonna be out there. Peddling dope. They gonna be out there. They went on, they went on and on and it was a phone booth out there because we didn't have all these phones then. They gonna be claiming they're making a phone call. They gonna be casing our tag and following us to the home. We got, we had a council member lose his position over that because he voted with me to let the drug store go forth. Maven Hicks. Know what they did? Nothing. And the people who came here complaining about "they," those are the ones that, those are the customers. Same thing happened with Publix. They came down here, said, "No." Because they know, they. When you go in there, the same people that was down here hauling, they got their baskets in there filled up with groceries. Here we go again. They.
All the people saying "they" is, do y'all?
Hold on, hold on.
I'd like to.
Mr. Richardson, you finished?
Yes.
Let me ask a question before you go, Ms. Rich. Everybody have terms. Ms. Gregory.
Mr. Woods, why did they go to planning commission anyway and it was a privilege of a club?
Good question. Because they wanted more than 100.
Yes.
Because they were seeking more than 100 in occupancy. If, if, there would have been no requirement to go to the planning commission had they not sought more than 100.
Right.
And we wouldn't have this discussion. They would just be open. So, the fact that they have entered into, entered into self-restricting with the planning commission, it's, it's a good thing. That's, that's, that's not a bad thing. I'm not saying that. But those restrictions have already been put in place, 80% of what the neighborhood was asking for. But now, what you see is, and this just needs to be talked about publicly, is there's this agreement out there that they've been asked to sign and this process, this process is being held up because that's out there for more negotiation. And that's not part of our process. That is not part of what we do. We don't allow the government public process to be used to hold these folks in abeyance just because somebody wants them to do something that they're not legally required to do. But to answer your question, it's because they wanted more than 100. And they got that.
Do you know how long that building been there, established there?
It's been years. It's been years. Tag's been closed for a number of years. So, I can tell you at least three years it's been closed.
Yeah, mine, I very, I was very, very disturbed when, I know this issue goes back into July when I had a church member came to me and asking me about the license, liquor license because they wanted to open up for the 4th of July. And I told my churchman, "It was a process that it has to go through." And so, I said, "Usually, the council does not vote it down unless there's history or prior history at that particular location." And the police department does not recommend it. And I said, "That's when the council usually throw up red flags." And so, months after that, I was porched by a relative of mine saying that there was having an issue at the planning commission and that the people had told them they needed to be located on MLK. I did not believe it whatsoever that somebody, somebody would say that in an audience, a public audience. And I just did not believe my relative at the time. And so, recently, I said that if it was any issues that Levon Manzi would bring that to the council and discuss it, but never did hear anything from Levon. So, recent now, you know, in clarification that MLK was mentioned and also Pritchard. I mean, to me, that's, and I'm not racist whatsoever and I don't throw racist slurs across this dais, my good friends are Caucasians. But that is very hurtful that somebody would have the nerves to say, locate on MLK or Pritchard. Who are you? No, they do have prior conventions that they, crime that they have, police records. That's been over 15 years ago. Jesus gave you and I'm pretty sure you have seen within the past year or two, if not in the past day or two, or not in the past hour or two. Just because somebody had got arrested or settled 15 years ago and was not convicted, it should not harm them today. Everybody need forgiveness. And that is very hurtful for whoever. I don't know who said it, but whoever said it, that is very hurtful and hateful against the African-American community. And just to hold these ladies up, and again, I just know of them, don't know them personally, but I do know that I am a African-American business owner. It's already hard being black trying to start a business. Now, you telling somebody where you take your business to? That's, that's disgrace. Ms. Rich.
Thank you. I'm going to speak from some institutional knowledge about what Councilman Richardson was talking about, the drugstore at, what is it? Dolphin in Florida, right? I remember, I was, I was here on the scene. And that went from R1 to B2. It was a zoning issue. And that's when people talked about what could go on a B2. When they discovered that it was going to be a CVS, that was something they were, felt could be an asset to the neighborhood. But what they didn't want was any kind of liquor license ever applied for so that it did not become a beer and wine outlet and because they thought that those hours would compromise their neighborhood. It had to do with the quality of life and the balance of why you use zoning to make your city grow and be, you know, sustainable. The applicant actually self-restricted and unfortunately, we, we don't always map everything right after things get rezoned. And so, I've not been into that drugstore, but I'm going to assume it does not have a liquor license because the zoning would prohibit that. And so, that's just a totally incorrect kind of intent of what a neighborhood that was racially balanced that came out. I remember that audience. So, it, to, to say that it was all about a racial issue or they didn't want because that makes no sense. It was zoning and the same thing is here. There is a zoning law that basically says in the entertainment district, 100 seems to be the right capacity. And when, when it functioned with, before that law was on the books, it didn't work. Okay? Now, it's not saying that, that these individuals would not allow it to work, but you have to know when to say when to planning laws because they really have a purpose. They sustain your neighborhoods. They sustain your investments. So, I, I see it that the council person is not here and also the fact that, to be quite honest, in, in hearing, I can't speak for one person that might have issues that is offensive to others, but you cannot just put a whole umbrella over everybody who talks about wanting to have something when they've invested and what they would like to see happen around them and we have the 100 rule. I think that's a prime example of where it should be followed. And so, it has nothing to do, it's not a racial issue. It wouldn't matter what color the person was who was applying. It didn't work when it expanded. There's no reason to do it here. And maybe after they get the model going under the law, which is the ruling of 100 and, and it works well and everything goes right, maybe then they can come back. But I don't see where giving them a liquor license and expand because they have an expanded number because to me, it's about planning and zoning and quality of life for getting the balance right.
Mr. Woods, you did say they did say they was going to do 100.
No, no, no.
No.
No, no. So, let me, let me clarify something here. This is not a zoning issue. That issue has already been handled at the planning commission and appeal is not before you. That issue is already, so they're going to 178, 179.
Oh, okay.
Okay? It's not a zoning issue. It, it, this, what was being talked about is trying to push them into a zoning conversation, but that's, that's, that's a pretext. It is not a zone, the zoning issue has already been resolved and there has been no appeal. That is not what is before you. What is before you is a liquor license. So, there's a process for changing the, the occupancy level, not necessarily the zoning, but the occupancy level. These ladies have already been through that process. That was at the planning commission. That occurred. They received it after much strife, all of the things you heard about in July and now. They have gone through that process. They have passed. So, what is before you is there's, there's some people who are trying to get a second bite at the apple with the zoning by holding up this ABC license. That is what you're seeing. I just need to be forthright with you. And before you all vote, probably during the break, you probably need to talk to Mr. Arledge about what happens next. You probably need to talk in, with council to see what happens next with this.
They can go to Montgomery, is that correct?
No, he's talking about threatening the court.
No, 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 no. No, no, no.
And I appreciate the lecture of the city attorney.
No, no, no.
But the fact is, we know what the, is before us. we know what the, um, is before us. Now, the, there was some confusion on the administration side when they spoke earlier what the subject was, but I think we all know what the subject is. And, and to, first of all, to, to, for anybody to say that John Williams is worried about somebody's skin color.
So sad.
After, Mr. Chair, that is absolutely unfounded. Nobody in my life can say that that was the case. Nobody.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, if he interrupts me again, I'm going to ask for the doggone guards to take him out of here.
You can't do that.
Hell, I can. I can ask. And Mr. Mayor, I cannot believe that you let there and said, let your counsel do what he did last week and what he's doing this week. I know you better than that. And to allow the false accusations of the honorable folks on this council is just simply unfounded, and is, is, is unconscionable to me. Now, I'm, I'm leaving this office. It, this is not about something else. It's not about a hidden thing. If it was, I'd simply tell you, and you'd have already heard from me. Everybody knows that John Williams shoots straight. And I don't back down. The fact is, this discussion needed to take place, because I want the administration to understand, and I want the people of District Two, who are not represented at this point, to know that the council has their back when it comes time for enforcement on this property. I hope it does, and I wish the ladies luck. I do. I've been with Downtown Alliance since before I came on this council. I was sitting in the stands up here, trying to get the bid, because I knew what this downtown could do. I just don't want to see it in any way harmed, or its progress. So, please don't accuse me, or anybody on this council, of seeing things in color and not in substance. That's all I'm asking. I had never an intent to vote no on this application, none. I simply want the assurance, as Director Batiste did, that the administration was going to pay attention to this property. That's all. And that was going to be my final comment, was, I'm ready to roll. Let it go.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold, hold, hold on, Mr. Woods. Mr. Williams, are you finished?
Thank you.
Mr. Woods?
So, at no time did I want to insinuate that anybody on this council, Mr. Williams, Mr. Williams, I want to apologize to Mr. Williams if he thinks that that was happening. But what I specifically said is, I don't think anybody on this council knew about those underlying issues. Okay? I know that the Planning Commission folks, maybe Ms. Rich knew about some of the back and forth, but I'm not sure that she knew everything. What I'm saying is, the people who are talking to you, so, I can echo exactly what Mr. Williams said. John Williams shoots straight. He always says what he means and means what he says. Have the utmost respect for that. I don't think in any way, shape, or form, Mr. Williams was motivated by racial animosity. I do not. I don't think he even knew about most of these things, because we hadn't talked. What I do know is that there are a number of people at the Planning Commission level, neighbors and others, not all, but some, some, who gave ill treatment because of those issues. And it wasn't just one isolated incident. It was a number of people asking questions. I don't think that any member of this council was aware of that. That is why, when no one openly said they're withholding consent, I was confused last week, and I wanted to give you the underlying information of things to come. It was not a call-out. It was, I need to give you this information, because I don't want anybody to say, why didn't you say something? Why didn't you tell us? Let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Miss, uh, Mr. Batiste, um, understanding that the precinct is now down near that area, and you will have officers not only patrolling that area on Jackson Street, but all the entertainment areas across downtown, especially like Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, correct?
That's, that's correct, Council.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And we have assurance that your, your, your officers will do their very, very best to make sure everybody's downtown is safe, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Where's the precinct again?
Right there on Water Street. The old, the Wacoville Building?
Okay.
Yeah. And hopefully that we'll have a police chief out there. We can get some help to direct this. Anything else from the council? Madam Clerk?
Reso, resolutions held over 08-820, approved purchase order to CDW Government for twelve display monitors for a convention center. 08-821, approved purchase order to SCA Group for anti-crime robot for Police Administrative Services. 08-822, approved purchase order to Tractor and Equipment Company for greater, for, um, motor pool. 08-823, approved purchase order to Stopstick LTD for sixty tire deflation devices for the Police Department. 21-827, authorized contract with South Alabama Land Trust for support with conservation easement activities on wetlands, parcels on Brookley property. 31-828...
Madam Clerk, is Jennifer, is Ms. Green here?
She's not here.
Uh, if, just someone just give us, give us just a brief about this. I mean, I know, but just rest of the council can just really understand what's going on here. Can anybody talk?
She'll be here, Detective.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk?
31-828, approved grant application to ADECA for construction of ADA compliant biking and pedestrian path along Three Mile Creek from the Japanese Gardens to the Trestle Crossing south of Stevens Lane.
Mr. Vice President?
Ms. Gregory?
When, uh, when Jen is here for the regular meeting, if she will also update us on that one as well, so maybe she can just do them together when she's here.
Okay.
Consent resolutions being introduced. 03-834, appoint Jacinda Hollins to the Mobile County Foundation for Public Higher Education. 03-835, 836, 837, 838, 839, 840, 841, are appointing and reappointing Sanford Davis to the Board of Adjustment, Timothy Hollis to the Citizens' Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and Janika Powell to the Mobile Civic Center Advisory Board, Eunice Blakely to the Code Advisory Committee, Theda Blunt, Greg Hearn, and Stuart Brooks to the Electrical Examiners Board, Sandra Huntley to the Mobile Tennis Center Advisory Board, Cameron Beckham to the Mobile City County Youth Council. 46-842, rename Lake Drive in District One as Tricentennial Drive. 37-843, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Fuse Kitchen. 37-844, approved certificate of public convenience and necessity to Corey Brown doing business as Let's Ride Taxi Service. 58-845, 846, are declaring weeds noxious and authorizing removal of weeds, Groups 1620, 1618. 68-57, approved settlement agreement. Um, this one will be added.
Are we allowed to talk about that one?
Approving a settlement agreement?
And it's, it's under consent, right?
Yes.
It could be under regular. It, it actually is under regular, so, uh, whichever one you want to do is fine with me.
Well, I'd like to talk to my colleagues, and...
Say it, Russ.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, that's the East Drive, and, um, it's been going on for a while. Um, and Ms. Cochran was involved prior to her exit, so, um, in deference to having that background, she stayed on that case and, and worked on it. So, the agreement basically, um, consented, I, and actually, if, Chris, could you just outline, once the consent, I'm not even sure exactly, you know, how, how it comes out?
Hey, Mr. Arledge, I'm sorry. I was, I was going to ask you, we may want to go into executive session, you all may want to go into executive session for this one, just since it's litigation.
Mr. Arledge, yes, that's why I should go to executive session with that.
Yeah, we could do that.
That'd be great.
Either after, between meetings, or whenever you want to do it, I'll be glad to fill you in.
Just go into executive session at the meeting. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
So, I'll need to...
Do you all want it under consent or regular resolutions?
I believe that we should do regular.
Regular.
Yeah, be nice.
Regular.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
Okay, okay. Resolution's being introduced. 08-847, approved purchase order to Samsung Equipment to rebuild side load arm for garbage trucks, thirty-three thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. 08-848, approved purchase order to Dana Safety Supply for patrol vehicle upfitting for eighteen Chevrolet Tahoe vehicles, one hundred ninety thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. Sixty, six, what?
Yeah, it was listed twice.
Oh, okay. It was listed here, okay.
That's why.
Oh, okay, so it shouldn't have been over there. All right, I got you. So, that was gonna, that was gonna be sixty, eight fifty-seven.
Same number?
Yes.
Let's move to, okay, thank you.
08-849, approved purchase order to Lynx for drive cam subscription and installation for eighty cameras, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
It's, uh, the Purchasing Department going to use these cameras.
Someone here to answer Mr. Richardson's question?
I understand, but it said, submitted by John Payne. So, is he going, is he going to put them on his equipment? Over in the Purchasing Department? The Zarbax said, we need to know. The Zarbax says, we, council needs to know where the money's coming from. Here it says it's coming from John Payne. It didn't say nothing about public service.
Okay, so, we can add that on there. It's just a matter of, you know, not putting a whole long sentence and making it three lines.
Public service, that's two words. Add it. Thank you.
It actually says motor pool.
Motor pool would be fine.
Right.
Motor pool would be fine.
Go anywhere.
We need to know where the money's coming from.
Madam Clerk?
08-850, approved purchase order to, what is it, Reconno Robotics, for two bomb protection devices for the Police Department, thirty-two thousand, six hundred thirty dollars. 08-851, approved purchase order to WW Granger for robot systems for the Police Department, one hundred thirty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. 08-852, approved purchase order to Kessler Police Supply for twelve night vision binoculars for Police Department, seventy-six thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents. 08-853, approved purchase order to Kingdom Horse Trailers, for horse trailer for the police mounted uni, unit, forty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. 08-854, approved purchase order to North American Fire Equipment for fire safety training trailer, two hundred fifty-eight dollars, nine hundred and forty, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars. 21-855, authorized contract with, um, Protect Video for video surveillance consulting services, one hundred thousand dollars per year.
Okay, so, where is this going? The video surveillance?
This on the Protect Video?
Hmm?
Yeah, that's part of, um, our intelligence project, Shield, is...
This for the Police Department?
Yes, sir.
All right.
21-856, authorized contract with UAV survey for telemetry capabilities, MPD, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. Announcements.
Do we have anything from the council?
Not now.
Oh, so, um, we were also asked to add, um...
Speaking of Mike.
Mr. President?
One second, Mr. Mayor. What you, what you about to say, Mr. Madam Clerk?
We're asked to add, um, the resolution appointing the, uh, police chief.
Oh, we couldn't have guessed.
That's, that's what I wanted to speak to. Yeah. Yes, I'd like to speak to that, please.
Okay. Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, you know, last week I introduced, um, at the time, Major Prime, to be appointed to the Interim Acting Chief, subject to your approval. And some of the remarks that were made last week was to point out that he was, you know, raised in Alabama Village in Pritchard, Alabama, that he graduated in nineteen ninety from Viger High School. Um, he's had more than twenty-six years of policing experience. The first two were Chickasaw Police Department. In nineteen ninety-seven, he joined our police academy class, and he graduated at the top of the class, earning academic honors there. He was also awarded the Chief's Overall Elects Excellence Award, and he was nominated by his peers, uh, to be the class president. That was in October of two thousand and one. Excuse me, that was, uh, when he was at the Police Academy in nineteen ninety-seven. Many of you may recall that he was wounded, shot multiple times, uh, in the line of duty in two thousand and one. Um, he previously served in twenty thirteen as the captain of the Third Precinct. In twenty twenty, he was promoted to major, where he commanded the Field Operations Division. Uh, from a educational stat, uh, educational standpoint, he's got a bachelor's, uh, degree in business administration, and a graduate degree in criminal justice, both from Faulkner University. The process that we went through was a very rigorous process. We had an outside consultant who helps, uh, organizations, um, assess leadership, and that's person, um, is Dan Lumpkin. And during that assessment, and during the interviewing process, uh, even though we had six candidates who had applied for the job, and I would say that, uh, some of these candidates, even at the captain level, uh, there, there are future chiefs in the chain of command in the Mobile Police Department. But the selection was made for, uh, to promote Chief Prime. And so, what I would ask is that you consider adding him to the agenda, and I would also ask for unanimous consent, so that we could, uh, move forward with his, uh, confirmation.
Yeah, I would not mind adding it.
I'm in.
That's fine.
You got three?
Best, best.
Yeah. You got three?
Got three.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
Are we adding this under consent, or...
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Williams?
And I, um, this is not a secret. I am not surprising anybody. And I just hate that, uh, that all these, uh, all the leadership, it's always good to see y'all, but I hate that you came all the way down here, uh, today. Uh, we know that y'all support him. Uh, and I've talked to many of you, and, uh, of your peers, and, uh, even some people that y'all wouldn't even dream that I spoke to. But I would like an opportunity, uh, and I've already, um, talked to Chief, uh, that we're going to make it happen between now and next Tuesday, so I can know him on a, on a more personable level. Uh, and I assure you, going back to what I earlier said, I can assure you, he will get a positive vote from me next week.
Can, can I ask something too?
Uh, there'd be Ms. Rich, then Mr. Richardson.
Real quick, um, and I spoke to, um, our Chief of Staff, Jimmy Barber. Um, I'm excited to see the new chief come from the ranks. I think that's wonderful. Speaks so highly of all of you and your professionalism. Uh, my question, which I've asked every, um, vote that I've had to render in this capacity, is, um, will you be moving into the City of Mobile to join us and all the people that you'll be responsible for? So, just like to hear that publicly.
Yes, ma'am. To the mayor, to his staff, and certainly to the council, it's an honor to stand up here before you. Uh, yes, ma'am, to answer directly to your question, absolutely. That's a, that's a nonstarter for me.
That's right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Um, you know, I just want to say, the number one goal right now for the City of Mobile, for all of Mobile, is attacking violent crime. We've got a violent crime increase, not only here locally, but nationally, and we've got to deal with it. Uh, we have a competent staff here that's here before you. We're ready to address that problem. We really need to move forward. We've been in limbo for a period of time. You know, the, the limbo is very important, because when you deal with morale, especially with officers or military personnel, if you will, uh, it is very crucial to the organization. However, um, I would like to say that I'm eager to get to work, and I hope I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Fred... Yes, Mr. President. I was wondering whether or not the Director of Public Safety can arrange between now and ten-thirty for Mr. Williams to sit down with the...
I appreciate Mr. Richardson's concern, but I've talked to Chief. We're gonna probably do it Friday morning if he's available, and I've set up a room and breakfast, and I'm gonna pay for it personally, and we'll pay for it.
Just right.
Every council member has a right to hold up a general item when it first appear on the agenda, and they really don't have to give a reason why. It's just the council rules. I would like to say congratulations, you know, to your nomination, Major Prime. It's no secret, especially with the administration, that I had reservations about it. When I first heard about the candidates was coming forth, you know, I had reached out to the administration and asked, you know, about, you know, going outside of the police force. Because my colleague, Mr. Richardson, you know, always stayed. If you keep doing the same thing, you keep getting the same results. And it's no secret that there is high violent crimes in Mobile, and a lot of the crimes that are being committed, and I'm ashamed to say it, but, you know, it's African-Americans that we keep on seeing on television committing the crime. You know, my issue was with that is that we need to do a lot of, you know, preventions and someone that's out there that, you know, African-American young people can have a sense of, I can go to this person and the chief has a relationship and they can relate to, you know, a lot of, you know, citizens that are causing the crime. And what really had changed my mind, and I was not gonna vote no, I was gonna stay in my vote, it's no secret, you know, telling it across this dais, because that was my concern. We needed somebody that probably with fresh ideas, that can relate to the people that's committing all these crimes. But when I sat down and talked to Major Prime, and he stated to me that he was raised up and grew up in Alabama Village for nineteen years, and in Pritchett, I said, well, you can't get no closer than that, you know, than to relate to the people that's really, you know, committing a lot of these crimes and everything, that a lot of crimes is coming from. And with him saying that, you know, had gave me an assurance that he can relate to a lot of, you know, African-American youth in our community, even though that's several years ago. But at least you have some type of relations there, and that was my main concern. So I'm looking forward next week to cast my, you know, vote, you know, favorite for you to be the next police chief of the City of Mobile.
Mr. Vice President?
Ms. Gregory?
Thank you. And Major Prime, soon to be Police Chief Prime, welcome and thank you for coming forward. Thank you to all of the candidates who put their names forward to be considered. I know we have a wonderful staff, very experienced, and I know you will do a great job for all of us in the city. I am also very happy to see someone coming from within the ranks. I think that is a positive for the entire Police Department. And I was happy, just like Mr. Small was, to hear about your background and to listen to you as you discussed ideas for community policing. I think that's very important. So sharing your new ideas, working with the community, working with the council, I think is just all a very, very much a positive. And I just look forward also to casting my vote for you next week. Welcome aboard.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. You heard it stated that Major Prime was assigned to Precinct Three in two thousand and thirteen. I was the councilman at Precinct Three, and crime went down under Major Prime. He was visible, he was active, he made all of my community meetings throughout District One. They knew him, they knew his phone number, they knew how to contact him, and they were unafraid to call him to report criminal activity. And a lot of these districts, people are not saying nothing for fear that the criminal is gonna come back and get them. If they don't know you, they're not saying anything. So he made himself available and visible, and I have nothing but respect for him. You've heard some talking here today about race. Let me just say this. If you can stand and walk upright, if you can talk, laugh, cry, think, plan, reason, read, write, you're in the same race I'm in. To prove you're not in my race, you got... Your function must be different from mine. It's something you and the folks in your race can do that nobody in my race can do. It's nothing you can do I can't do. Meaning, you are in my race. Color can't put you in no race. They got dogs my color. They got hogs my color. Squirrels my color. Color can't put you in no race. It's your function. But you might not have the same ethnicity. Your ancestors came from a different part of the world. That's not race, that's ethnicity. And Paul is bringing with him mixed ethnicity, and he has seen it, he has heard it all. He already knows. He has been demeaning himself. So I'm not concerned about him. I'm just ready to vote. Ready to vote right now? Paul Prime gonna do us a great job.
I would say that I was talking, when I was talking to Major Prime last week, I said, I know you can't fix everything overnight, but, you know, in years' time, I'm gonna be, you know, speaking over his microphones, get crying, don't get down. And, you know, we do have a serious issue. I mean, I have, you know, constituents, older people, they can't even sit on their front porch because they scared of, you know, their neighbors, you know, et cetera. But I have a faith, you know, to Major Prime that, you know, Mobile is gonna be better than what it is today when you get to be chief. No offense to the autumns at all. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Vice President?
Mr.?
If you're so inclined, do it in executive session. The matter will be a pending litigation matter. It'll take about ten minutes. It is appropriate under the Open Meetings Act, and just could reconvene at the regular meeting, if that's what y'all want to do.
Oh, yeah, definitely want to go to executive session. Yeah. Go upstairs?
Yeah, we're gonna go to the night floor. Madam Clerk?
I'll need to... We need a motion.
And a motion, yeah.
A motion and a second, and then I'll have to call.
convene upstairs in the executive session.
Second. A proper movement second in the discussion?
No.
No, he has to be over.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rich?
Yes.